I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing that we always do is approve the agenda. Does anyone have any questions, additions, comments on the existing agenda? If not, I guess I'll look for motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
I have a motion by Maggie Bass, second by Sean Ryan. If there's no other comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, the agenda is approved. First thing on the agenda, we're very honored to have the chief and fire, assistant fire chief of the fire department here to kind of give us a little update on renting a piece of equipment.
Hello everyone, thank you guys. So tonight we're looking at approval to rent a truck in the meantime of replacing a truck that's currently out of service. Every year our trucks get checked, inspected, and certified for its to be on the road and to be used to fight fires. On October 22nd, emergency apparatus maintenance found a crack in the frame rails of our rural truck. The crack was on the frame side, or the crack was on both sides of the frame, which took the truck out of service. Tried looking at a repair and it was quite costly. At that time I notified the rural and the city of Mike of we're in need of replacing this truck, getting something short-term. And then at our budget workshop, I requested if we could move the new truck up from 2020 to as soon as we can, which would be hopefully next couple of months. The reason to have this replacement truck is when we go out on a call right now, we're taking our ladder truck and an engine because we don't know what we're going to run into until we get there. It could be a big call, it could be a small call. So when we are out fighting this one fire, we need to have a truck available for that second call. It does happen, only a few times a year, we have a need for all three trucks. So what we're hoping to do is get a third truck in here as soon as we can. Right now, the county, the surrounding departments are willing to help us out where it's needed. Anything else you want me to cover with the rental part or?
The arrangement.
The arrangement right now is to rent this truck for $500 a month. With, if we purchase a new truck through this company through Custom Fire, they'll deduct half of that off the rent using it. It'll be a truck that we can use, I'm hoping for around nine months. All depends on when we place an order for the new truck. Any questions so far on how we do this or?
And the rural department is?
The rural department.
Part of the additional background here, you were here when we went through with Sean, was when we bought the ladder truck is that we worked extensively with the Rural Fire Association to examine all the different pieces of fire equipment with the goal in mind that if we work together and work collaboratively, we could try to find ways to minimize the needs for the replacement of certain vehicles. And by consolidating, we could maybe save some dollars long-term. So maybe Jeremy, you could touch on a little bit as we look at replacing this pumper and then cities as people are behind here, what it is we're not going to have to replace by this process.
As of right now, what we're hoping to do with this new truck is put some of our rescue equipment into this truck, then in 2025, replace the city-owned engine and whatever equipment we can't fit into the first truck we put into that truck to combine all our rescue equipment into two trucks and then not replace a rescue truck, which is like a big cargo truck. Instead of replacing that bigger truck, who knows what will be around here at that time with a lot of industry comes in here or what, but what we're thinking right now is getting a smaller truck that's at least half the price. So what we're gonna, what we're gonna try to do with this truck is incorporate some of the rescue equipment into it and replace some of the rescue equipment that has aged. So we try to carry around a full set of rescue equipment and a backup set. So with this new truck, it will have the ability to fight fires and rescue. Where with the first truck, they're built more for just fighting fires with the amount of storage you had on, and now they make them bigger and tighter.
When we get the new truck, will we then, would that be always the first truck out or we still would go with the ladder truck?
They would both go. But then the city truck now would go into like a backup role. It would be if you use-
The one that's operable, the other?
Yep.
Okay.
Jeremy, what's the timeframe on the purchase of the new one? Are you starting to look at putting that purchase agreement together? And is that being bid out or is that going to be with this company? Has that been decided?
Well, we are looking at a truck, but the bidding part, I'll let Mike talk about that. This is how, we're hoping to use the same process as our ladder truck and Mike is up to speed on that.
Basically what we did the last time we bought the fire ladder truck is we looked at a program through a company called HGAC, which stands for the Houston Galveston Area Council that puts together substantial bid specifications on public safety equipment, public works equipment. And so what they do is they go through and do that on a number of different pieces of equipment, i.e. the fire department, they've got different ladder trucks that they've done, they've got different pumper trucks, they've got different crash vehicles or other things that they have. And so effectively, they've gone through the process of preparing the extensive set of specifications. They've taken bids and those bids are good for a certain period of time. And so they have different vendors where you can look at different competing fire companies and look at different pumper trucks and that. And as you take a look at it, you can make your selection of that company. And we don't have to go through the formal process of preparing an entire set of specifications to do that. The city attorney has approved, reviewed that process and approved that that we can use and that currently is still valid if we're a member of HGAC. And we were the first time in the end, what we ended up having to do is build through the, whatever company you procure the vehicle through in the end, is there's a $2,000 fee that gets reimbursed back to HGAC for all the work that they did on the front end of panels altogether. So as Jeremy and the fire department have looked at the various vendors and the various trucks, they can pick, basically it's a kind of a stripped-down model with only certain features on it. And so you pick that chassis and then you come back and work with that vendor and build the body on it as far as the different types of cabinets and safety features that you want for the rescue equipment and other things that go on that. So in some cases, it's standard, other facets of it is kind of a custom design build. And so they work with the fire department and go through and develop those specifications to put on the body that wraps around, what is it, a thousand or 1,500 gallon tank?
And sort of a thousand gallons.
A thousand gallon water tank. And so they do it that way. And so from the city attorney's perspective, that satisfies the public bidding requirements. And so we'd only have to formally create those. So I have already been looking at that and I think have looked at a pumper truck with Custom Fire after looking at several others. And so there's a base price then for that pumper truck. And then now they start to look at the cabinetry and the other add-ons and those kinds of things that would have added features to that pumper truck for a grand total or a purchase of whatever it involves.
Well, $500 seems very low to me for a rental, but I thought I understood until the very end there. So Central Fire has already been determined to be the successful vendor?
Well, they've looked at it and they've evaluated the various pumper trucks under what's listed by HGAC, or at least I believe you have it.
Yes.
And we went with Custom Fire the last time with the fire truck and had a great arrangement. And we have other trucks for them as well, do we not?
Yeah, the two engines that we have now handle ladder truck.
Yeah, I have no knowledge of that, but I just am more concerned with the process to make sure that it, understanding it more than anything else.
It's like, if I'm not mistaken, it's like state bid. So all the other manufacturers compete on that through this HGAC program. And then whoever it's awarded to, from what I understand, I'm not, I didn't read all of, I don't know how many games are into it, but it's basically like the lowest price for that type of truck.
So is that bid, is that bid going to go out with the rentals?
There's two different things that we have going on here. Tonight is the agreement with Custom Fire for the rental of a piece of fire apparatus to have on hand to back up the pumper truck, which is out of commission.
Right.
That's at $500 a month, split 50/50 with the rural, so that's 250 apiece. If in, we ultimately make the final selection and Custom Fire is who we're going to go with for the new pumper truck, then what they will do is they will reduce that rental price from $500 down to 250, split 50/50 with the rural.
Right. And the company that's handling the bid, they also would come or, you know, line up the loaner truck, so to speak?
Well, no, we've made arrangements irrespective of what we do on the long-term replacement of the pumper truck. The arrangement we're trying to look at is through Custom Fire to have a backup piece of equipment onsite at some price. We looked quite extensively, or the department did, trying to find some because we did not want to be caught short. And we continue to hope that we get this on hand before anything occurs. But we have some backup because as Jeremy stated, it's going to take eight to nine to 10 months to get a new pumper in place. So we need to have a backup for that and a rental arrangement. And we took a look at the neighboring community of Shockey because they just went through the purchase process. And so as you take a look at getting to this point, to be able to have access to a temporary piece of fire apparatus, not everybody has good quality used equipment sitting on hand. And if they do, they're really not wanting to put it out on rental, they'd rather sell it. And so in working with them, they've been a good partner with us in the past. And so they have a vehicle that the department has taken a look at and talked about and functionally we believe is workable at a pretty reasonable rate. And if we ultimately purchase a new pumper truck through them, then they've got the rental pricing.
A little history on it is when they were notified that the truck was inoperable, there was a meeting with Mike and myself and some representatives of the Rural Fire Association, just kind of going out over through our options. And we all felt that going, trying to get a rental truck, because we did look at the Shockey piece of equipment and other options. And we thought if we could find a good rental piece of equipment to hold us over for the length of time it took. So that's basically where we're at now for our approval. The Rural Fire Association got their approval already. So we're just waiting and then we can get the lease signed and then have the, set up the delivery of the truck. I think it's ready or they were checking on it?
They're hoping to have it ready next week.
Okay.
And the next closest truck we could find for a rental was $1,500 a month. I didn't, I didn't see the need to go for that.
Shockey was sold as a used piece of equipment for, I believe it was-
$11,000.
$11,000. We didn't really want to get into ownership of something of this age and vintage that, because then we run the risk of using it for eight, nine, 10 months and then trying to sell it ourselves. And so the arrangement with Custom Fire at $500 a month, that if we go with them, we cut it in half, is a pretty reasonable price with the Rural Fire Association paying him. Move over to the room if you're ready.
So Bruce, to your question, is, they're still reviewing, they haven't made the decision to go with Custom Fire yet. We have used them in the past, but that decision has, as far as we're concerned, has not been done yet?
No, we're still a review.
So if we, if they decide with someone else, we wouldn't get that credit back or that 250 back?
But in the bottom of my memo on the recommendation, what I also added besides entering the agreement is to move towards replacement using the HGAC program, which was acceptable and okay with the city attorney in the past, to help us avoid having to go through and develop our own bid specifications on a vehicle of that nature. That's too arduous and too difficult to do. And under the HGAC program, what they've done is that they've done that for us. And so it's a matter of going to their listing of the various pumbers, under the various different companies, taking a look at that and making a decision as to what we want. And by that selection, it's already been pre-bid out at that price.
Just from my own education, that HGAC, is there a fee they charge or they get a percentage?
No, $2,000 is what I said. When we, when we work with the vendor and make a selection under that contract, as part of the purchase price of the vehicle, there's a $2,000 fee that they charge us that gets reimbursed to HGAC.
Any other questions? If not, I guess I'll look for it now. Do you want us to do two separate or can we just do one motion?
Well, it's really just a motion entered the agreement and I'm just trying to, so that we don't proceed down that path and find out that the council isn't willing to support that. We did it in the past and it would save the department and city staff a significant amount of arduous bid time to try to procure those specifications. That satisfies the bidding requirement, depending on ultimately who we slot under that program.
Okay, so I guess we could first make the motion to not only accept the rental agreement, but also to use the HGAC program.
Your order.
Okay, motion by Rick Sayer?
I'll second.
Second by Sean Ryan. There's no other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, pass is 5-0. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Have a good one.
Next, we have a, I think there was a letter that was sent out to the city council regarding the open lot, which sits next to, I don't know the official title of the lot, but next to the corner bar. And-
Hi, you're with us from the downtown highway 19 stakeholder committee. We have two representatives tonight, Kay Willeck and Dennis DeVorak. And they made the recommendation coming out of their December meeting, which I have not attended. But I think Kay's here tonight to provide the council with a little background and recommendation as to why the downtown committee feels that this might be approved and appropriate thing for the council to consider.
I know what you're all thinking. Didn't she just leave?
Well, we got Kay and we got David in the audience.
A little bit of background, in April of 2017, the council appointed 15 residents of the city to a stakeholders committee to evaluate the different aspects of what we're going to make in the downtown. As part of that meeting, we have the illustrious city staff here, our engineer, and the staff from NINDOT. We meet at the fire hall every other month. And like I said, we started, we started in 2017. Tonight, we are discussing the corner of Central and Highway 19. It's a lot that formerly housed a restaurant that burned down about 15 years ago. And like I said, over the past 15 years, he has gotten no inquiries into the purchase of that lot. A downtown consultant once told me that an empty lot on Main Street is like a smile with a tooth missing. And I think you can see that's pretty evident. It's just a real eyesore. It is the consensus of the stakeholders committee that the city purchased this lot. And the intent is to use it as a central plaza, well, a central avenue, I thought that was kind of, central avenue, or central plaza. Just how it will be developed is not known at this point. We have to have something solid to build the design on. Some thought has been put into maybe getting the pioneers to go along with a mural on that wall, sculptures, plaques, greenery, someplace to sit. So I think it'd be a nice addition. It'd be something like what was done next to the wine bar. I would like to close by saying there's a lot of doom and gloom about this Main Street project. People are chicken low, you know, everything's going to come to an end. But I was here in 1991, as was Bruce and Dennis and a lot of the audience members. And there was a real, it was not fun to go through, but there was a real excitement when the project was over. There was a lot of new businesses that came into town, new boutiques, and it became a destination shopping. So I'm hoping that that's what we can accomplish and I think this little part will just add value to the project. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, one thing I forgot to mention is in that little plaza, we could maybe put a tree to commemorate Glenn.
Am I dying or what?
No, Glenn hates down trees.
Isn't it also, Bruce, if I'm not misunderstanding, that in Glenn there is going to be need for some of that lot for utilities and that stuff or?
Right. We want to make some provisions so that, to somewhat future-proof downtown by having, we want to put in some fiber optic cabling and that type of thing. So that if we decide in the future, we want to do some smart lighting ventures or have cameras in certain intersections, that type of thing, that we have the ability to do that and have the conduits in place to do that. We need a spot to kind of bring all that together. It wouldn't be a structure that's really visible in the lot, but subterranean. And that's a good spot to have that too, so we could utilize that for that portion of it also.
Okay.
Bruce on that, would that be able to be done within the easement? Or are you actually talking about asking, you would envision it being in the lot space?
I think it would, it would probably be both in regards to that, but we would actually probably use it into the lot space.
So significantly, a couple of yards or half the lot?
Yeah, probably the size of a table or sofa, a man way or whatever, to just terminate cables in.
But it could be put at ground level where you could actually kind of hide it in some way.
Yeah.
It wouldn't be obvious and, you know, a structure going up with electric written on the side or anything like that.
Thank you. You also talked about water too.
We did. If there's a need for water there, that'd be the perfect spot again to bring in a water line. Who knows, someday some kind of a fountain in there or something like that. And again, you can buy decorative structures to cover a water meter and things like that and just make it all fit into like a part setting.
Okay. Dennis, would you like to say a few words?
I would. From a historical perspective. The lot sits on a former site of the Reebok building. They'll work on the turn of the century. And Mahabharata ran the restaurant and functionary in the front of the building. And her husband ran the saloon in the back of the building. It was also connected to Reebok Bottling Works, which was formerly a parking lot of the city hall. The site was also one of the first places that President Hudson Ducks quick ran from the golf course behind Main Street and emptied into that intersection before draining into the mill ponds that are behind the building. So it has, it's kind of a central location. And when I got on the stakeholder committee and all the tier report, that was my primary objective is to get this corner lot developed, to bring the green space from the park down on Main Street, make it aesthetically pleasing not only for visitors and pedestrians and the citizens of the community. One of the things that I noticed that as I drove through Cannon Falls, was a project through the Southern, you know, Southern Eastern Minnesota Arts Council, they did a series of photographic murals. And as I, after I saw those murals on the surface of number one building, which is the post office in downtown Cannon Falls, I thought this would be a perfect place to address the history of that corner and that intersection. As it led up to the first city hall and headquarters of the fire department and the opera house located on the former site of the state bank. The first state bank, which was just down the street on the northern side of Main Street and across the street, additional buildings that make it aesthetic, which would be interesting to make the visitors and community aware that history took place in that intersection. So I contacted the Cannon Falls Chamber of Commerce and they sent me a brochure. It's kind of a toss to the murals specifically that they commissioned an artist, which approves the artist's name. And the Chamber of Congress conference bulletin, commerce bulletin, that they published. And so you can look at this and maybe get an idea of what I am advocating. I'll start that one.
Okay.
And I'll start this one first. The images for this mural came from the collection of Cannon Falls Historical Society. Our historical society has a great collection of images. And that would be, I think, just a great focal point to address that wall that Kay talked about as the amount of the lot is an eyesore. The pioneer of art does have some restoration work to do on the uppermost corner facing that plaza. I can envision an art piece. And presently, we have an installation down on the greenway, down on the intersection, across from the co-op station, that's hidden and buried in the green space. It is a, if you have visited, you know that it is a structure made of bronze reliefs that local residents will pass in presence created under the directorship of Kirsten Shetka and her husband, who cast the Memphis State Miss Foundry, of which she is art professor in residence. So I would like to address that, to bring that up into that space, just realization of just moving it to a different location. And then through the stakeholder committee in our last meeting, we were addressing maybe what could place on Main Street to tell the history of the community. And so I envisioned also a installation there, a vertical explanation, maybe that addressing the history of Main Street, whether including the intersection or whatever the committee wishes to include in that. I think the plaza also brings, opens the space leading to the city hall. And depending whatever you do with that building, whether you add on to this building as the needs are increased for the city or turned into a community center, it opens up the space and brings kind of a gathering space to the downtown area, which is a frequently needed. As I have expressed before, you can do whatever you want to Main Street, the pavement, the sidewalks, whatever, but you still have to address the condition of the buildings and make it aesthetic. Plants will not do it alone. I think that as this project goes forward, I think the businesses, as Kay mentioned, and business owners are stressing out about the accessing of the businesses, where are we going to park and da-da-da-da-da. I think that we should be proactive, address this purchase and create a vision for the downtown area, of which this plaza is included, so that people become excited about 2020 and the results of what is going to be a stressful and painful and inconvenient process. But in the end, I think that people will embrace it. And I do think that it has great potential for the community presently and for the future. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Dennis?
You can, Kay, the brochures. I'm going to give one to Brooke at the chamber. And when we get to that point and if it's accepted and the murals, the mural on that blank wall is something that our committee wishes to pursue and the city, which embraces, then we can move on and put that in the discussion.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, Mike, where do you, obviously, be a discussion on any kind of purchase of any land or anything?
Well, the council, at least per the city attorney's recommendation was that he would encourage you generally not to go into a lot of discussion about whether you really necessarily want to purchase if you have an interest or you think that the concept is something that is worth pursuing. The next steps obviously would be to have discussion to take a look at whether you want to consider as part of the process to either develop or consider offers to purchase. And he'd recommend that you go into a close- or consider offers to purchase, and he'd recommend that you go into a closed session to do that, so as to not necessarily disclose any relevant acquisition strategies or approaches to do that, if that's what you were interested or inclined to do. Then my recommendation to you after consultation with the city attorney was to, if you have interest, to proceed further, is to refer it to the next council meeting, and to go into closed session per the statute that allows you to go in and have discussion on the very issue in front of you.
Okay. What's the consensus?
So the reason you're doing it next week or next meeting is because of, you don't want to go into a closed meeting today, or?
Well, we have to note it on the agenda that-
Oh, it's evening posting time?
Yes. That we have to post that as part of the agenda. There's certain things that we have to do to comply with the open meeting law and posting to go into closed session, and so not knowing exactly what the council was inclined to want to do, we didn't put that on for tonight's discussion.
So the action you want to take in right now is to table this until next meeting, or?
Well, it would refer it to the February 4th council agenda, so that I could put together the appropriate notifications on the agenda.
Make motion?
Well, I don't think we had to make a motion, just the consensus, I would think.
I think further discussion is certain.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I guess consensus of the council would be to put it on the next meeting's agenda, I think that's February 4th, and go into a closed session and discuss our options. Okay?
That would be the appropriate direction.
Okay. You don't need a motion or anything for that?
No, it's okay. Just do my consensus.
Sounds good. Awesome.
Be thankful to the committee of-
Yes, thanks Kay and Dennis for enlightening us, and appreciate your work on the stakeholder screen.
I won't promise I won't be bad.
Take David with you, no, I'm just kidding. Next on the agenda is the sanitary sewer report, a comprehensive plan that Chris, S.C. H. has been, was working on in 2018, and now we have a finalized report in front of us.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and the city council. I assume you've read the report cover to cover, and taken notes, et cetera. So what I did want to do is just do a little summary of the report, kind of hit on some of the highlights, maybe some things that folks in the community may be interested in. Obviously, the image you see before you there is the city limits, and within the city limits, the existing sanitary sewer system and the districts that are shown there. And on the slide, you do show like figure one is, reflects the figure one that's in the report there. Just a few fun facts regarding the City of New Prague sanitary sewer system, noted here, again, twenty-two thousand, over twenty-two thousand feet of sanitary sewer at Fort Orton. Pardon?
Two hundred and twenty-two thousand.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, two hundred and twenty-two thousand, thank you. Forty-two miles, there's nine pumping stations, lift stations. The average daily flow at the wastewater treatment plant is 0.85 million gallons per day. The plant was completed in about 2010. The capacity of the plant is 1.8 million gallons per day, and when I get into, we talked about growth areas, et cetera, essentially, the plant is able to handle those growth areas that are in the comprehensive plan. One thing that's important to note when we talk about wet weather flows, wet weather flows have exceeded 3.4 million gallons per day during heavy rain events. As you can see, that is in excess of the capacity, the design capacity of the plant. We'll talk a little bit later here about inflow and infiltration, as a term referred to clear water getting into the sanitary sewer system, and how that affecting, affecting the infrastructure. And I want to bring it up, most people understand the difference, but this will folks, the public, understand, there is a big difference between storm sewer and sanitary sewer. The two are not to be together, and they are not intended to be together. When it rains, when rainwater is intended to go into the storm sewer, which in, for New Prague, goes out to the creeks and ponds, et cetera, it's not meant to get into the sanitary, but when it rains, rainwater does get into the system, which is why we see increases during heavy events, where they'll jump up to 3.4 million gallons a day. Now, the plant does have the ability to have a surge basin up by the wastewater treatment plant, which allows some excess water to go into a storage, it's one of the old treatment ponds from the old plant, so it's able to handle those, but again, that amount of water is not meant to be in the sanitary sewer system. One of the reasons for that, that is a part that the city has been dealing with, is reducing the amount of clay pipe in the system. Through all of the years of reconstruction, since early 2000s, the city has gotten rid of a lot of clay pipe. As I note here, forty-two miles of sanitary sewer pipe, right now, there's about five and a half miles that's still clay. It's these lines that you see in pink. Main Street, we're going to get rid of that in 2020, we're going to get rid of this little segment here in, this year in 19, and in 21 through 23, we have scheduled in the capital improvements plan, this neighborhood over here, they'll get rid of the bulk of that. We'll be down to probably a little over a couple of miles of clay pipe after about 2023. So by doing that, the city has addressed and gotten rid of a lot of the inflowing, or basically infiltration of clear water that gets into the sanitary system, into the clay pipe through cracks, joints, et cetera. There's still considerable amount that gets in by other areas as well, so I'll hit on that a little bit later here. A few other facts in regards to this comprehensive plan, why is this being done? Just a backup here, I think in 2000, population was a little over 4,400. Back in 2003, a comprehensive sanitary sewer plan was done, partly to have planned for obviously future growth in the collection system, but also to plan for and design the capacity needed for the new treatment plant, which again, was completed starting about 2006 and completed in 2010. Also in 2007, 2008, after a lot of growth had been occurring, there were some areas that were being looked at for possible development, and we did some, what called area studies, looked at the northwest area town, northeast area town, and southwest area town. Ultimately, none of those developments occurred, but the studies that were done at those times were helpful, in fact, were carried on in this current study. Obviously, growth occurred in early 2000s, ten population in 2010, 7,300. Estimated population as of 2017 estimates, 7,700, or twenty-two, almost 2,300 households. Where we're at today, or at this point, is in 2018, we're commissioned to complete an update, or basically a new comprehensive sanitary sewer study, and looking at population growth out into the future, and again, projected population of just under 12,000 in 2030. Again, the treatment facility, or that whole growth area, is designed to accommodate that, so that's really not an issue as a treatment facility. So as part of this 2018 comprehensive sewer plan, this was actually, the city was successful in obtaining a grant from Scott County through the Economic Development Grant, which covered about two-thirds of the cost of this project, or the study. This study was a little different than the study that was done in 2003, and obviously, just because of time, more available technology, et cetera, we were able to use a lot more resources that didn't exist back in 2003. The city has a full, completed GIS mapping system that was able to be utilized as part of this study, and we were able to build on that and added additional data to that, basically creating survey quality elevation data to the system, which was used in completing the model. We collected flow data, there were flow meters put in at key locations to measure exact flows that were occurring, and what kind of flows occurred when it rained. But again, talking about inflow and infiltration, and how much is the system affected by, by clear water entering the system. So a computer model was developed, basically a flow model of the exact, of the system, and it was calibrated using the flow data that was collected. It was collected between April of 18 till about October, foot meters were taken out in early October of 2018. And we did get a number of good data samples during heavy rain events, where we could see what was happening in the system. Of course, now the model's being able to be used to model, of course, the existing system and evaluate, you know, areas where there might be potential issues, or future improvements may be necessary. The key is, is this is going to be a living model, meaning it can be used, utilized and built on in the future to basically demonstrate what's happening, and as more development occurs, more, more of the collection system added to the system, et cetera. So I want to show this, not getting into the details, but just you've got the report, there's a number of maps in there, this is a lot of output data that was created by the model, I just want to give an example of kind of what, kind of the output of the information that we were able to get from that model. Again, meters were put in to measure flows, and we used to calibrate this computer model, and from that runs were able to be done to determine where there are areas of potential, I'll call it flags, so the issues with flags that we could investigate further, whether or not it was something that needed to be addressed, or understood what was going on. As you can see, most of the system shows up green on this output, and what is basically the ones that are showing up in orange and pink are just showing lines that, sewer pipes that are running closer to full during heavy events. And so basically, that's what it is, is a ratio of how full is that pipe. As an example, a pipe, around pipe reaches its maximum capacity when it's eight tenths full, so eighty percent of this pool after it's filled beyond that, it actually starts to lose capacity and things like that. So we identified certain areas in the system that were flagged, and we were able to take a little closer look at those and find out exactly what's happening in those pipes. This is just an example of one area, this happens if you're just curious, here's Main Street here, this is First Street southeast to southwest. A lot of these lines were replaced in early 2000s under, I think, under three or four projects, so it didn't all happen in one shot. Pipes changed grays a little bit, just based on, they were matching the existing, existing pipes at the time, and the model just indicated that there are pipes in certain areas that are flowing full, and we're able to see what's happening in the system. Not a major concern, but this is, again, the kind of data that we were able to look at, and there was a handful, half a dozen or so areas like this we'll be able to investigate. Again, not terribly concerned with what we were seeing. So part of the, other part of the model was to look at growth as it occurred in the community, areas that could grow, where areas that had access to gravity sewer, areas that didn't have access and would have to be expanded out to. So I'm not going to get into the details here, it is in the report, but what we did is we looked at, started with the existing system, again, you can see these are the city limits, that's the existing network, and then we looked at type of, we're referring to stage growth, so stage one kind of being the areas that we thought might be more likely to develop right away, that somebody could come in literally tomorrow and have the tent to develop some of these areas that are shaded. So you can see from the existing corridor limits, we have these areas shaded outside, some of them are a little optimistic, but these areas, that some of them potentially could start, you know, system could be expanded out to them and they could be served. In some cases, it might require, we'll call it interim, lift station or facilities to get to them, or expansion of the system. So in the study, again, then we carried it out to this kind of a stage two, and what we call the stage three. Stage two just being additional area beyond that, realizing that by the time we get to stage two, we're probably looking at some trunk systems that need to be installed before any, you know, some of those growth areas would be feasible to develop. And stage three was kind of the, kind of the ultimate growth area, this was, I think, the growth area that was identified in the comprehensive planning document. And by chance, this is about the growth area that, again, could be served by the capacity of the wastewater treatment plants that exist today. This is just an example, again, in figure 11 in the report, just showing what we did is we kind of carried it out to the worst-case scenario, how is the existing system in the community affected as growth occurs out to kind of that ultimate area. The reality is, the majority of these growth areas that you see shaded around the community, a lot of those won't actually be going through the existing system, they can't even be served by the existing system, they can't get there, a lot of those will be served by future trunks, sanitary sewer mains, lift stations, et cetera, but some are coming into the existing system. What impact do those have on the system? And again, you can see kind of the green lines, and then the shaded lines, and again, those are the areas that we analyzed for how they might be affected during heavy wet events. So a couple of things regarding the sewer model that have actually proven a benefit already in our current planning is, one of the things we identified in the report was the ability to abandon the library lift station. There's a lift station now in the library, that under the Main Street project, we're going to, we altered the sanitary sewer design somewhat to basically take the flow down Main Street and abandon where it's being pumped to. So number one, we're eliminating the lift station. It also provided some guidance for us, that we modified the design a little bit on Main Street from what initially was planned, we didn't have the luxury of a computer model that we do now, we were able to model some change in pipe sizes and some grades, and showed in the model that it will be better served that way. Again, we're able to identify and quantify capacity issues, or at least areas that needed some attention, and again, would be useful for basically our design capacity of analyzing the design capacity of a future network. So one of the things that may be of interest to, you know, some of the developers, members in the community, was, we did a little, just a little exercise, this is not, these are not exact areas, but just kind of indicating areas that are more prevalent for development, more prevalent to be served by gravity sewers that either exist today or requiring some extension of sanitary sewer to service those areas. Again, areas marked in blues, and these are not complete, some of these may actually be partial areas, but some of these areas that were identified to be served almost immediately by gravity sewer. So again, part of the exercise was to confirm that we could take some of these areas into the existing system without impacting the existing system. One of the areas, it's actually not even shown here, and I do have it in another exhibit, is the area outside the city limits on southwest, which actually ironically is, because of elevation, can actually be served quite well by gravity, it isn't even marked here in the area, but, so this kind of shows you, again, the areas that, oh, it could happen under this, this is basically the stage one that we're referring to. Trying to illustrate that a little closer, this is the east side of town, again, you can see the existing city limits, because it exists today, existing network, it's shown up in black, but it's hard to tell, but, try to dial, we tried to dial in on this a little bit more, regarding, this is the east side. A couple of things to point out, as I noted here in the bullet items, there are topography challenges on the east side, as everybody knows, there's Sand Creek over there to the east, I can see it on these contours, provides kind of a geographic or a topography boundary. Really going to be hard to stretch gravity sewer beyond that, at that point, there'll be likely a lift station, or it'll have to be a lift station in a certain area further east of Sand Creek. Again, the comprehensive plan is not really, is not addressed growth at this point out beyond there, and again, the comprehensive plan really only looked at up to Sand Creek as the area. The one key thing to point out, even though I sort of showed shaded areas on the previous drawing, is there isn't a lot of area here that really can be served without- drawing, is there isn't a lot of area here that really can be served without the construction of what we're calling the Alton Trunk Sanitary Sewer. So the wastewater treatment plant's up here in this north area, 12th Street here, the green dot here is showing a proposed future, what we call a northeast lift station, and then these colored lines coming down the Alton alignment and maybe over to the east would be what we refer to the Alton Trunk Sanitary. For any development really to occur between existing city limits and Sand Creek is really going to require that Alton Trunk Sanitary Sewer to be done. I do note in the report, I do it on a lighter slide, when we're talking about a project that's been estimated at about seven million dollars, is really going to have to occur with conjunction with some development and some other actions potentially by the city. Again, I mentioned northeast lift station, one thing this Alton Trunk Sanitary Sewer main will do, Alton will add a lift station up on 12th Street in Alton. It'll give us the ability to abandon the Lady Slipper Lift Station over on the east side, which over in this area, and the Chalupski Lift Station over here. Those will be able to gravity into that system. So we gain one, but we eliminate two. And again, the area further to the south and southeast ultimately will still have to be served by a lift station and what we're calling the southeast lift station, really creative terms here. We shift over to the west side, kind of a lot of the same story on the front of the north end, we have a lot of topography issues that are great, will create challenges for growth and expansion. There are areas over there right now that can be served by gravity sewer, by extension of sewer mains, et cetera, some of them even just outside city limits. But ultimately for this area to continue to grow will require ultimately this northeast or northwest lift station to be installed and a force main to the treatment plant. Southwest lift station, another creative term here, again, a lot of this area in the south end of town, south and southwest, to develop some of those little subdivisions if they're ever reserved, they'll have to be served by Southwest Lift Station over in that area. One area that I mentioned previously again, wasn't really even part of the study or even shown in these areas is further south and west of town, at least by topography grade elevation, it actually can be serviced by gravity sewer, the basically gravity sewer that exists today with extension of that. So that's an area that could potentially develop without less challenges. Some of the capital improvement recommendations that were identified in the report, again, in 2019 to 2020, we're actually constructing, in 2019, the first phase of some trunk sanitary sewer that's going to be replaced on Third Avenue in preparation of the Main Street project, and then in 2020 replacement with sanitary sewer on Main Street. We have identified, there is the main sewer line that goes up, parallels the railroad tracks from Second Street northwest on up to almost the County Road 37. It's a major line, a lot of flow and we're recommending that that needs to be cleaned and potentially lined, at least cleaned and evaluated and then we'll evaluate what needs to be, if something needs to be done to it. Again, addressing the last of the clay pipe that exists, the five point five miles, again, where a lot of it will get replaced during reconstruction and then some of the remaining stuff will need to evaluate if we just plan long-term to have it replaced or the options of lining is something that could be addressed as well. The Alton Avenue Trunk Sanitary Sewer main, again, for future development really to occur in that east end of town is going to require that Trunk Sanitary Sewer main to be completed, which again, as we noted, somewhere upwards of several million dollars. There's a number of lift station improvements, a lot of maintenance items related to lift stations, recommendations that were also in the report. So just want to get on a little bit about inflow and infiltration, one of the other recommendations we have is referred to as an administrative recommendation. Again, inflow and infiltration is when clear water gets into the sanitary sewer system. Clear water is not intended to be there, shouldn't be there, it comes in through a number of ways. Again, it may come in through cracks in clay pipe, it may come into cracks on clay sewer. It's very unlikely we have a situations where we have catch basins going into the sanitary sewer, but in an old community, boom, back up. In an old community, that sometimes does exist, they call it cross connections, we don't know if they exist, if they are, it might be like on a Main Street type situation, but unlikely really in this community. The most likely culprits of inflow is what we call inflow and that's where maybe tile lines around homes were connected to the sanitary sewer like in this illustration or sump pumps are connected into the sanitary sewer system. That's why we see this jump from again, from point eight five million gallons a day to three point four during the rain event. We are recommending in the report that the city considered developing an INI abatement program and a lot of cities go through this and it's again evaluating your ordinances to make sure we have everything covered, public education, again, remove those sump pumps and basically what we call private property inspection and compliance program where we can begin to evaluate if there are tile lines connected to sanitary sewers and getting those disconnected. Again, those are affecting the capacity of the plant, it's costing the city money at the plant, treating water, wastewater volume that doesn't need to be treated. In some communities, INI can be very volatile because it affects backups, people get wiped, rossage backups into basements and that politically can really move things. Luckily, in your case, we probably really doesn't have a big problem with that. Some cities have wastewater overflows at the treatment plants because too much water gets there. Again, the city has a search base and it's able to deal with that, but again, it is something that is affecting capacity, it is affecting cost and it is something we'd definitely recommend. So with that, I have questions. There was a lot of data.
I do. In your capital improvement summary, you've got a list of lift stations for improvements. Is there a priority in these at all and do you see some that should be addressed sooner and later?
I think we've pretty much listed them and we've also listed kind of estimated costs. So I think it's really, really up to, I think, staff to determine what those priorities are. I personally did not do the inspections of the lift station, a specialist who deals with that did. We certainly could work with staff on recommendations, but I think it's a matter of budget and what they see as priorities. So they're not big dollars, again, if you look on page 25, the biggest dollar one was the library lift station, which now just got wiped off.
Thank you, Chris.
I have a couple. One bottleneck here, or a choke point, does it affect the ability to develop another area of the community or if it does affect other areas, does that spell out in the report?
Well, I think it's-
I imagine they're interrelated to in some degree.
Yeah.
Because this one goes back easier, right?
Not that one.
Maybe just have a slideshow and you can kind of jump around.
So I guess the point I want to, item to point out is a lot of the growth areas, the majority of the growth areas are not going to affect the existing system. The one area that was going to affect the existing system is, we'll call it up here on County Road 37, just north of like, you know, Holiday and that, there's what we call the County Road 37 Lift Station. We're going to verify what the capacity of that is. If we start bringing more flows in here from the east into the existing system, they all ultimately need to all go through that County Road 37 Lift Station and up on the County Road 37, as you can see up in that area there, we do have some areas that we're, we'll call it flags, concerns that they're getting closer to capacity. And again, by evaluating those, we're determined there really wasn't an issue. Now, as we get into more development, we're going to build that Alton Avenue Lift Station and once we do that, we're going to take off the Chalupski, we're going to take off the Lady Slipper Lift Stations, those are going to take those flows off of that system and so it's actually going to make things better there as well. So the reality is there isn't a lot of the existing system that's going to be impacted by long-term growth, maybe short-term growth, then again, we're comfortable with the short-term growth as not being an issue.
You mentioned this a few times and it's more my understanding here again, those expansion or I think the expansion, equalization basins are all the same thing we're talking about there. And I kind of thought they weren't used anymore, but you, you're referring to them quite often as being an active part of our treatment system.
Yeah, just one, there's a smaller one, there's the big one you can see from the road and then there's a smaller one that's closer to the wastewater treatment plant that currently takes that overflow when it occurs.
Is that the one you're referring to? Is the big one no longer used?
Correct. But just by the geese.
Okay, so that's our sanctuary there, okay. In the report, there's a population growth and you mentioned it here, but for 2035, that number seems kind of strange to me, but on the executive summary page two.
Yeah, and that was out of-
Four thousand nine hundred and nine.
Yeah, that was out of the comprehensive plan, so.
Also Ken gets-
Yeah. Well, and again, those projections were done when?
Those were done, geez, about seven years ago now and I think we haven't, still haven't seen the growth on that level, so they're probably optimistic for where we'll really end up, but we'd rather aim high and not have the projections go high rather than sell ourselves short.
With the rate of growth is so dramatically different from the projection for 2030, which is over four thousand growth and in five years it's only going to grow a thousand.
Right.
So you're assuming a very fast growth and then a very slow growth.
Yeah, it's a-
So it's-
Our consultant at the time helped develop those and it's a big guess, I mean-
But it didn't really affect what you did or what you brought here, I mean.
Ultimately, I think Chris mentioned our build-out areas, I think we're still comfortable with that and we feel that accommodates growth out, you know, at least for another 20 years and not, you know, shoot ourselves in the foot by not accommodating for that growth. Whether the number ends up beating that, I think, is another question, but the area is appropriate.
The point eight five to three point forty you mentioned, I don't have any understanding of that, is you said that we don't have a severe or significant problem or is that a meaningful?
Different, I'm sorry, can you-
The point eight five to the three point four, were you talking about clear water entering the system?
We're basically, again, the average daily flow, the flow that on a normal day that goes to waste water treatment plant is the point eight five million gallons a day and during a heavy-
Eight hundred fifty thousand gallons.
Yeah, eight hundred fifty thousand gallons. And during a heavy rain event, and I don't know what day to what storm or what kind of inches during-
That was the worst, worst case scenario we ever saw.
But basically quadrupled the average daily flow for that day.
And I'm just trying to understand, is that a meaningful material difference than St. Peter or somebody else or are we, oh, that's insignificant, or should we be concerned about that? You mentioned that it's not really a big problem.
Well, yes, it is a concern because the biggest thing is it's costing, it's costing treatment dollars at the plant, I mean, that's probably your biggest thing. There's always a risk of backups, I don't know if under that storm event, if there had been backups at all. I mean, it's maybe a little bit of a blessing and a curse, depending on how you look at it, that yes, when there are big events, you haven't had a big, we'll call it INI problem in terms of people getting rossage backups into the basements, rossage overflows into the, you know, from the plant, a lot of communities are going through that and it's, they're working hard and addressing it because it's a major issue because, you know, the public is demanding something be done. Communities up in the metro area that are basically billed by Met Council for treatment costs, they're dealing with it dramatically as well because they're trying to get the cost down. Again, you're not necessarily seeing it because it's a cost, but it's a cost of the plant, it's like, it's something that you're-
So this study didn't get that detailed where you went into the railroad track and said, well, in this area is all planned by Joe, we have a big increase on the water and on that particular line?
We were able to identify districts that did, though we do know there was a lot more INI. So we do know that this district, District Four in the southern, south end of this community, which also was taking some flow from this dark orange shaded area, it was contributing to the greatest amount of INI. Well, guess where the most clay pipe was? But it's also a certain era of homes too, that we saw a lot of homes that were built like back in the 50s and 60s that had those foundation drains connected to the sanitary sewer. So those are, that and sump pumps, it's the foundation drains and the sump pumps that are your biggest culprit of clear water getting into the system. Again, we can go all we can about taking care of the crack pipe, clay pipe, and again, when we do projects, we replace that pipe up to the right-of-way line, while there's still clay pipe from there up to the home if that's, that was what was built and then maybe foundation drains attached to that as well. And there's communities that are going through and doing televising from homes out or if somebody sells a house, they have to prove that it's sealed up and again, the impact can be tremendous in terms of removing that clear water from the system.
So you mentioned to do lining on those clay pipes, but we might not see a dramatic benefit?
That's correct, because if you don't take care of the services, you take care of the mains, but if you don't take care of the services, you still have that clear water getting in. And again, we don't, we're lucky in that, in the city, they've seen, you know, the plant, they've seen an improvement after all those years of reconstructing mains, putting in the PVC, we have seen the numbers come down again, and there'll be some more improvement with the remaining clay that gets replaced over the years. But if there's ever clay pipe that can't be replaced, maybe we'll have to look at, you know, do line it and things like that. And some of that's just to protect the integrity of the pipe, keep the flow characteristics, make sure it's smooth, et cetera.
And my understanding for the library, I know when we expanded the library, that was a limiting condition, that infrastructure behind the library, so how much of that infrastructure goes away, those tanks and things that are located back there, those white caps and everything?
Yeah, so there's a lift station, there'd be probably wet well, dry well, they're both wet well and a dry well, so they're both barrel structures and then there's a force main that wrapped around the library, which is probably what limited the library growth. That will ultimately be able to be abandoned. It probably will have to stay in, you know, stay in operation until the sanitary sewer is completed on Main Street and then if little, it can be abandoned and it won't be in the way of something else later on.
Thank you. Do you also have any questions or comments for Chris?
What the study did give us is that back in the pre-development time periods, when the plants were coming in and they were looking at a significant number of homes over on the east side of town, that Ken was here and that was back when Renee was here, that they were having to do analysis on kind of a plant-by-plant basis, looking at whether we had sufficient capacity at the plant and we have capacity in the existing sewer system to accommodate the growth. Well, by building the plant, we took care of that issue and what you saw in some of Chris's presentations tonight is that by developing this model, he's been able to analyze it, that it's just not pen and paper calculation by an engineer determining do we have capacity in the system or not. So we've been able to actually model the system and come away with a degree of confidence that we can pick up some of the future growth and development that we, I think, were at one point a number of years ago, wondering whether that was ever able to be done. So, Chris, what figure was it where you had the blue and the green expansion areas? Was it figure seventeen or eighteen?
Ten, eleven, I think. Stage one in that?
No, I'm actually out, there, the colored one there, is that those are preliminary areas that are available and serviceable that can likely come into the existing system without significant problem line development, other than what's necessary to service that development. development. So that's the encouraging part of this that we didn't have before this study was undertaken and completed. So it gives us information, you know, we've met with, before we started the study, we met with any and all of the individuals that are involved or have been involved in the development team of this community, to try to ascertain or understand where they might be looking at and what they were wanting to do, and where's it, where they see growth and development, either from a residential perspective or a commercial perspective. And the question is, is are we able to service some of those areas? And I think we've got a bit of an understanding as to what we can do within the existing system, short of having to build some of those major crunk lines that Chris talked about in his presentation.
I have a quick question, too. Have our ordinance, do we have ordinances on the book right now for the clear water sump pumps and whatnot?
Yes.
I'll let you answer, Mike.
We have an ordinance that says you cannot discharge your storm water, sump pump water into the sanitary sewer system. Our issue, our conflict's always been, is policing that. You really need to develop a program that there is a designated person that will go back and police that, verify it doesn't change, because if I knock on somebody's door and says, you can't dump your sump pump water down your wash tub sink anymore, they'll say, oh, sorry, and I walk out the door and they dump it back into the sink. There's got to be a policing action, there's got to be something that you can go back to on a regular basis, just to make sure that that doesn't change. The other thing that takes a lot of time, but it would be someday very beneficial to us, is to come up with a program that we go into every house and video their sewer line going out and looking for drain tile connecting onto the sanitary sewer. We've found it in past years of residents that have had sewer service trouble, and they dug right next to the house. We came to an inspect and went, whoa, you can't hook those up, which then is a significant cost to the homeowner, but our ordinance says you cannot hook those up. So we know they're out there. It's just getting the manpower, the equipment, and the time to go out and police it, check for it, and then follow through to make sure it happens. So yes, we do have an ordinance that reads it.
You should follow it up with Ken, you want to talk about, we do take care of that with all new homes that are constructed.
Yeah, all the new homes, we do the inspections on those, it's more of the older homes-
Yes.
Where we just don't know what happened, you know, 50-plus, well, even more that, you know, built in the 50s and 60s, that timeframe.
It won't surprise us when we dig down into Main Street and come onto something and go, oh, well, that's a contributing factor. And if it's not there, that's great, but, you know, that's really old. And if we find it, I won't personally be shocked that we might find something like that. I don't know of it. If we knew of it, we would have corrected it, but it could be just one of those deals that nobody would have any clue when it ever got looked at.
Does our building code allow for, if there's a significant improvement to a home, an addition or something of that nature, for us to then inspect to see if that clear water is going into the sanitary sewer system?
Not in building code necessarily. It is, the other question, we've kind of talked internally, is if we're doing an inspection and we happen to see outward and openly connection of something going into a drain that shouldn't be, then, you know, we'll certainly take the time to let public works know about that, but as far as building code addressing that, no, it's not in building code then.
Maybe I can comment. There are a number of communities, again, through their I and I programs, who have like, have made a requirement that when a home changes transaction or is sold, that it has to be proven to be in compliance with the sewer ordinance, and that anything like that would have to be disconnected.
I saw that in your report. I thought that was a good program to have in place, so that when it does change ownership hands, that you can go in there and take a look, and then, I don't know if there's some way to deter a homeowner from not, non-compliance, so that they don't get their certificate of occupancy, or they don't get their final inspection approval, or something of that nature. Doesn't have to be hashed out tonight, it was just some thoughts.
Hey, Chris, you know, on page 24, when you have the 10-year plan summary, you know, we're in, obviously, the 2019, you know, the 900,000 must be the Main Street project, you know, the 21, 23 must be the remaining of the CIP projects. These other ones that aren't very big, like, you know, the 10,000 and for the sediment vault and that, staff, I guess, is that something that you're recommending to do, and are we planning to do it?
Yeah, I think, I'll comment, I'll let Glenn comment, just, I think it was some things that were observed, either like during a structure, you know, we're evaluating, we're collecting a lot of data on structures, taking flow measurements and things like that, things that we felt maybe were affecting some of the capacity of the system, and that was one of them, I guess. And sediment in a vault was, the unfortunate part is, they got to it before we actually went and took the sediment out of the vault, which we do on a regular basis at all the lift stations and catch basins and manholes, and so it just stayed in there because it's something they found, and we didn't want to change how the plan was presented and things like that. But a lot of these things, like sediment in vaults and things like that, we do on a regular basis, no different than jetting a quarter of the town every year to maintain the sanitary sewers and keep them clean and things like that. So there's things in here that we do, do on a regular basis, it just was part of their findings.
Okay.
The other one they did mention, Mayor, is the railroad trunk sewer, the CIP, or reports, you mean, the evaluation of the railroad trunk sewer means, you know, that we've got money in the wastewater fund, and so it'd be a matter of working with S E H and the staff to try to put together a procedural process to go do that. So this community, after the 2019 budget obviously was put together, but we've got some funds within there to do a different professional analysis or whatnot within the system. So we'll just have to go take a look at whether we can get that program to-
Which one's that, the 201, 2B?
The evaluation of the railroad trunk sewer.
Oh, okay.
Going north of Second Street Northwest, along the east side of the tracks, up to near County Road 37, and then it diagonally heads east on the south side of the creek, south of the electric garage, over to Central Avenue, then up north to the-
Lift station near the bus garage.
The main lift behind the bus garage.
A little hard to see on this drawing here, but you see my arrow here, it did show up as a colored line, so it shows that there's this, there's segments of line that are, again, approaching a capacity. Again, we reviewed those hydraulically and felt, again, they're not a problem, but they're a pretty significant line. There's two of them, they're dual lines. One's being used primarily all the time, and the other's rarely used, so again, we just want to buy further what's going on there.
And when you blindly click, what's the process there? Is it significant savings? Is it?
Well, in a system like, you know, spot like that, it's, well, usually, a lot of communities will do lining where instead of, it's, they don't want to go through the cost of the dig up, and maybe it's an area where they're not planning to remove the road, replace the pavement, and therefore, it's usually more cost-effective.
We can go back to 2015, when we were on the west side and did some lining.
Well, we did spot, we did spot repairs. But it's a process they call cured-in-place pipe lining, and there's various technologies on how to do it. Some are done with hot water, some are done with, like, an epoxy, some of them are done with UV. But basically, it's basically putting a plastic or PVC liner inside that clay pipe. Clay pipe's the host, the new lining now is a smooth plastic, and seals out the cracks and the joints and holds the integrity of that pipe. From a flow characteristic, it's going to be superior to what's there, even though you lose a little bit in your diameter. Because you get rid of all your joints, and now you have a smooth pipe. And on the situation of the railroad, it's a really messy project to go try to replace a pipe on the railroad if, so the best option up there would be something like lining. There's two lines up there, one's clay, one's concrete, and that's one part of the reason why we want to get in there and inspect and televise that concrete pipe, because concrete pipe can deteriorate into wastewater flows over time. Again, we don't know what type of pipe, other than it was concrete, we don't know what kind of conditions, again. Again, lining it gets rid of that problem, keeps the pipe.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay. I guess we're looking, where am I here? Motion to approve the sewer study and add to the comprehensive plan, is that correct, Mike? Okay, I will make that motion.
So will.
Are you going to second it?
Oh, I will second that.
Okay. I made the motion, I made the motion, and seconded by Maggie Baz. There's no other comments?
I just have a question, Chris, is this a final draft? It's referred to as a draft. So are we-
It should be final. It doesn't say draft anywhere there, does it?
It says initial draft copies, when I received.
Oh, well, I guess the cover letter did, yeah. No, this is the final document, so we could rip out the cover letter, or just replace the cover letter.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye, any opposition? Okay, pass was five zero. Thank you very much, Chris. And I assume you're taking the next?
Uh, yes.
Next couple?
Yep, next couple. I guess I owe the night very much. So I won't get into a lot of details on this, other, and I can certainly go to exhibits if you're interested and needed, but when the, when the truck highway, or sorry, the 19 capital improvements plan project was ordered at the public hearing, we were directed to investigate adding bicycle lanes to County Road 37. And we sent, looked into that, we've looked at the cost, we've looked at the benefit, and with that, we are recommending that they, that they not go in, basically feeling that at this time, it may not be appropriate, that the cost versus the use probably just doesn't justify it. An example, when it maybe makes some sense, would be as an example, would be as if we've got a trail system that comes into the community and it leaves the community, and now we need a way around through the community, and that might be something that's more logical when you're going to see a lot more bike traffic. If you look through my report, I, you know, I compared what the cost is the city spends on pavement markings every two years on 10th Avenue Southeast, and what we anticipate the cost to be on County Road 37 if we add bike lanes, and probably looking at about $10,000 every couple of years. Again, there is wide enough that there are essentially, it's striped for what we call the fog line, which is the edge of the driving lane, that leaves the rest of the area for parking or whatever use that is, and I guess in all my times here, I don't see a lot of parking, except maybe during school events down by the ball field, so for the most part, there's space for bicycles, bicyclists to use that space. So I guess with that, we're, ourselves, the librarian, and staff are recommending that we do not include it in the project, or I guess we're looking for either concurrents or some direction from the council on that item.
The length of, or the width of the road is going to be what, on County Road 37?
So the majority of County Road 37 almost exclusively is 44 feet wide. Leaves us room for maybe two 11-foot lanes for driving, and 11-foot, I guess, essentially parking lane slash bike lane slash whatever, shoulder, whatever you want to call it. The only place that'll differ is down at the ends of 21 and at 19, where obviously two lanes are developed and things like that.
So is 11 what it is currently, or would you be suggesting it to be?
Right now, it's prob, I believe it's striped probably at 12-foot driving lanes, and we're going to recommend 11.
But curv, curv line's not moving.
Yeah, curv, yeah, curv line is not moving, but the driving lanes, it's historically, if you narrow the lanes a little bit, it slows the traffic a little bit. That was one item that we heard in neighborhood meetings, is the speed, and if we can drop speed a little bit by narrowing the old driving lane, we'll do that, and then probably provide a little bit wider shoulder or parking lane or bike area. So right now, I guess our recommendations, we're going to strike the center line, we'll strike what we call the fog line, that's the white line on the edge of the driving lane, and not intending to do bike, bicycle path lanes because of the additional, considerable additional amount of pavement marking that's required, considerable amount of cost that we just felt wasn't, didn't make sense, at least at this time.
I'd make a motion to inter with the findings of the S E H.
Okay, I got a motion, I will second that. There's no other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay.
Chris, I did have a question on the memo, and it refers to low volume of bicycle and roadway traffic. Am I understanding that to mean that you're viewing that as low roadway traffic?
Yeah, I guess in comparing that to like a place like Minneapolis, where you might see bicycle lanes on a roadway, lots of traffic, roadway traffic and a lot more bike traffic.
I would envision that road to be one of our highest-use-
I would agree, but, but again, I guess relative to an area where you would justify bike lanes, yeah.
I see, okay.
Municipal state aid program.
Oh, I got the wrong page. The barf mic's open a lot, Chris, oh, yeah, okay, here we go. Okay. So we do this every few years, so Chuck and Sean, I think, have been through this, and for those of you newer on council, you'll hear us use the term of state aid, state aid street system, especially when we start talking about projects where we're going to use the county state aid system. So what I want to do is go through this real briefly, kind of what we call municipal state aid's street program 101, kind of what is that? And, and kind of read this real directly, so communities of, that are over a population of 5,000 qualified to be in what we call the municipal state aid system. And it's to receive funding from the Highway Users Tax Distribution Fund, which is basically your gas tax, your vehicle, vehicle licensing, your sales tax, et cetera. It's that transportation fund. Now, that money is distributed to the state, to the counties, and to municipal state aid cities, so again, cities over 5,000. And New Prague became a state aid city in 2004, basically, since when they entered the system. And what does that mean? I go to the map, and it's basically, we're allowed to designate, we'll call it, our more major collector streets in our network, assign them a state aid street status. So as I noted here in the slide, that 20% of all our local mileage, so we look at all our mileage, which also includes the county roads, not county state aid highways, so we have county state aid highways, and then we also have county roads. So 20% of the local mileage, which calculates out to about 7.6 miles, we can designate it on areas that we think are more significant roadways of the community. And there, and the funding, then, there's a portion by some calculation that basically apportioned the funds to the cities. So you can see in the, in the map here, the roadways in pink are the ones that we have classified as state aid streets. It's going to be the more significant ones, the ones with the higher, mostly higher traffic, but there's a lot of low-volume ones as well. And they also, when I say part of a network, they have to end or begin, they have either a truck highway, county state aid highway, county road, or another state aid road. So it can't just be a road that just that ends- So it can't just be a road that just that ends at nowhere. So again, the Highway Users Distribution Fund, which most of us will look at gas tax, but again, it's a considerable amount of fund from licensing fees and vehicle taxes. 62% goes to the trunk highway, or MINDOT, this is Minnesota State, this Minnesota Taxes or Highway User Fund. 29% goes to the county state aid highway system, so for example, the county gets that funding, Scott County on County Road 37, except for the segment that they took off last year, if you recall. LaSueur County has First Avenue Southeast, that again receives county state aid funding. And then 9% of the, again, this big pot of money goes to all the communities of over 5,4, 5,000 population. I like to point that out because right now, there's 48 cities. That 9% pot doesn't get any bigger, but more communities come in and take a piece of that pot. So I noted that 15 cities have been added to the system since 2004 when New Prague first came on, so now we've got 15 more communities that are taking a split of the pot. Again, this is, this, the system was set up in about 1958 and is managed by, overseen by city engineers and oversight by MINDOT. So the funding that the city gets, or all 48 cities gets, is basically allocated in two different ways. 50% of the allocation is by population, logical, and then 50% is allocated by a process that they call a needs determination. And I'll give a little bit of details, not too in deep depth of what that is, but just kind of what that means to you, what that means in this whole funding scenario. So the funding, as it showed up in this report, is about, based on the population, is the city gets about $24.28 per capita for the population allotment. And for, I'll explain what this need calculation is, but for every $1,000 of need, what we do, the need is basically, if we take our whole, all those streets that were in paint, and we said, we're going to upgrade them today, what would it cost to upgrade them based on a formula that, and a program that's put together to help apportion the funding? So for every $1,000 that we have of need, we're going to get $12.49, about 1.2% of all the funding needed to improve a road. When I point that out is because in 2014, this process of calculating need changed. And that system had been in place since 1958. And the reason I bring it up is you recall the public hearing I, this fall, it was a gentleman from a township to product Naylor Avenue, and we asked, why is Naylor Avenue even on the system? Well, 2009, when I took, took over on the state aid system, the way the needs were calculated then was if roadway was less than 20 years old, it had just been approved and it was less than 20 years old, it did not receive any need, it would show that the city didn't need any money to reconstruct that road until it reached year 20. So our highest volume road, 10th Avenue Southeast, got $0. A roadway that's gravel, or low volume, or you know, needs major improvements, had a high level of need, and the way the formula worked in terms of getting a portion of funding, it made sense to put it on roads that were poor shape, not, you know, non-urban, non-improved, not even nonexistent, received more funding. And so we had identified areas like that, and Naylor was one of them. And it happened to be, we needed it to connect to another road that was designated as state aid. Well, 2014, the city engineers, after watching the funding go down, and down, and down, and down, and down, said it was just not, it didn't make sense to look at proportioning funding this way anymore, we needed to find a simpler system. And so it was changed to basically say that every street in your state aid system, every one of those streets that were in pink, should qualify for need, and we should apportion that based on the amount of traffic they carry. So, so there, the funding is now apportioned based on average daily traffic. We'll hire our highest volume road, it's 10th Avenue Southeast. It went from getting zero funding to now our maximum funding. Now, Naylor received a little bit of apportionment based on its need, but it's not as significant as 10th Avenue Southeast. So I just wanted to compare again, what this means, again, so I talked about this $1,000 of need and how much money communities are getting. This is what's happened, I don't want to necessarily mean the gas tax, but basically the highway transportation funding system, that again affects the state MINDOT, affects the counties, and affects cities like, state aid cities like New Prague.
Is it a wheelage?
Hmm?
Is it a wheelage? I heard about a wheelage today.
Well, that'll be another funding option that can go into this Highway Users Fund, et cetera, but as it exists today, so just to compare, in 1989, when the state aid system and city engineers got the report, they were getting six, almost $65 for every $1,000 of need, and in today's dollars, that'd equal $133 and the $219. In 2009, when the gas tax was finally increased, it hadn't been increased since 1988 to 2008, it had been increased, the, the cities were getting $13.91 for every $1,000 of need, which in today's dollars, again, equals about $16.24. Today, we're getting about $12.49 for $1,000 of need, so you can see how that's going down. As costs, construction costs are going up, revenue and funding is going down, and again, the reason I point this out is because this is the same for the DOT, this is the same for the counties, this is the same for all state aid cities. And I just for your information, just to show kind of what the history of gas tax increases have been, the gas, last gas tax increase was in 2008, and it was stepped over the years, and all that has done is keep, kept the downfall from happening. We've kind of held steady, you can see 13.91, 12.49, it's still going down, but it's not been just a free fall like it had been. So of the allocation, at this, again, this, this, there's a calculation done based on, you know, determining what we call need, and then by population, and then a basic apportionment that's paid out to each state aid city every year. 25% of the annual allocation, which is paid directly to the city annually, and 75% goes into what we call a construction fund. It sits there and it's ready for use when we need it, and we can only use it on state aid streets, or we can use it on what we call off system, we can use it on county state aid highways, or we can use it on truck highways as well. Our allocation for 2019, it's a little, just a few dollars different from the report, because I just got it last week, 337,722 is the city's 2019 allotment, and those are the, 84,000 is the maintenance share that the city will get paid directly, and otherwise the 253.20, 229, or 91 will go into the, into the city's construction fund. This is just historic, since 2004, when the city came into the system, first year of allotment was 114,000, and you can see down here in 2019 where we're at today, and then our construction fund balance right now is about 400, almost $408,000. For Chuck and Ryan, you remember that we, we did some, what we called advancements when we had projects, it's actually because of the state aid program, there's that pool of money, not every city draws on that money every year, that pool can be drawn on for an advancement. What's nice is it's, you can advance the money, have it when you need it, or, or get it when you need it, and pay it back when you get your annual allotments. There's no interest paid, and in fact, if you do the math, it's almost like having negative interest loans, so it's a process that we'll continue to use in the future. We've kind of got it penciled in here for potential funding in 2020 for the Main Street project, and then we do have a state aid street plan, First, First Street Northeast, or, yeah, First Street Northeast in '21, '22, and '23 are part of the state aid system and would utilize some of this funding as well. And we can't do projects like that without still doing, you know, assessments and all the other funding that we use, it just helps supplement basically the general fund. That's all I have for questions. And obviously, one of the reasons we did this, obviously new council, some of the council members, but also annually, I submitted a proposal to administer the system for the city, and this year, I, this past year and this year, I'm actually a district representative for District 7, who's the MINDOT district, cities, because the system is administered by cities, and they say, assign a delegate every three years from that district to represent that district. There's eight, eight cities, state aid cities in District 7, and it was New Prague's turn. So I got assigned a year earlier than, because Wasika County, our city engineer had left, and I was the alternate, and so I was telling Ken, I said, the good thing is after this year, you're, you're free and clear for 24 years before somebody has to get assigned to that again. So other than that, I guess, yeah, any questions, system or my proposal, et cetera?
Just a clarification, you said First Street Southeast, and what number were you referring to on that diagram? Was that the millionaire number?
Uh, no, it, it could be.
Back up here.
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, thank you. I, I can't get my directions right. Yeah, northeast, yeah, we're showing potentially $2 million, I think that's, if you add the two together.
But that's for the whole northeast corner top?
Well, that's for, the only part of the funding that can qualify is for the, is for the state aid road.
And you said First Street Northeast?
Yeah, northeast, so this segment right here, being straight, wide, straight east of St. Wences Church over to, to Lexington.
And that's a state aid?
Yeah, that's state aid.
How is that qualified?
Well, again, it ends at a county road, or county state aid highway, and it ends at a state aid, state aid street. Again, so what, maybe to back up a little bit, so again, we, we take, again, 20% of our mileage, and we can find that, we need a place to put it, and until we put it somewhere, we don't get any revenue for it. We can have, we can have miles in reserve that we don't assign anywhere, but we don't get any revenue for them. So sometimes we just assign it to a place, so we can go get the revenue, but we may choose to not do a project there, and we'll move that somewhere else. And we did that in 2012, we had First Street Northwest, or First Avenue Northwest, we had designated as a state aid street at one time, did a project, chose not to use funding on that, and we moved that mileage somewhere else, just to get, get the revenue somewhere else, and use the funding where it would make more sense.
So this is just a over-the-top question, but if you happen to live on that street, do you get the better benefit because you have state aid where someone a block away doesn't get that benefit?
No, think of this as more of a, it subsidizes or supplements the whole city's funding program, so that takes less impact, it'll be less impact on the general fund. If we didn't have the state aid funding, when we got to a project like that, it would just mean more general fund funding, so the whole community benefits.
You're still assessing the same proportion?
Correct, correct. Everybody receives the same benefit. We might build a slightly heavier road section on that street because we're going to anticipate some bigger traffic, maybe a little bit more traffic. We can't, we could also not restrict trucks or something from it, but I mean, most of them are local streets, and we're not going to get a truck on it and things like that.
Was that assumption a total reconstruction of that road?
Correct. Yeah, and you'll, if you go over there, it needs a...
It's just not that heavily used though?
Correct, but, and it's not that we, we likely would not build that one any different than we will the rest of the streets in town.
Okay. But if it is a state aid street, there are different...
Yes, so there are standards we have to meet, so we have, we, we have to prepare, we have, and we pretty much design all the roads to meet state aid standards locally, but we have, we don't, we have to follow certain rules, and they have to get reviewed and approved by MINDOT, so they're kind of the big brother that oversees. It's the city's money, but MINDOT State Aid Office oversees it, that's part of their jurisdiction.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, well, thank you very much for the education on the municipal state aid system, and I guess look for a motion to approve SEH as our municipal state aid representative.
I just wanted to point out in the letter to the city that came in our packet, and might thank you for that clarification, that District 7 screening board representative duties, it shows here, it says $3,600 an hour, when in fact, that is a lump sum. So just for clarification, so if we go ahead and make the movement to approve...
Hourly not to exceed?
It's hourly not to exceed, it might come in less.
So if we make a motion to approve this, I would like to have that correction.
Okay, Sean, would you amend your motion to...
I'll amend the motion to move forward as a hourly not to exceed 68.
3,600.
For the total of 68.
It's just this figure here, this one is correct, this one was shown at 3,600 hourly, and that's a not to exceed.
Oh, 36, okay, I'll make the motion to not exceed 3,600.
Okay, so we have a motion that's been amended to reflect a change of District 7 screening board representative, 36 dollars, 3,600 hourly not to, 3,600 hourly not to exceed $3,600. Something.
That hourly not to exceed 3,600?
Yes. There.
So good.
Okay, you got a motion by Sean Ryan?
Yeah, no, I just had, I just wanted to ask your question.
Okay, I'll second that motion, so I got a motion by Sean Ryan, seconded by myself. There's no other comments, your questions? All in favor say aye. Aye, any opposition? Passes by zero. Well, we're done with. Chris, now we got Glenn. It only gets better.
Well, hopefully this will be a lot easier to understand. Parts Department has in front of you a proposal to replace the 2011 11-foot rotary lawnmower that we use in the parts department, and we're looking to replace that with 16-foot rotary lawnmower. We got prices from two suppliers for that size of mower. Parts Department was able to demo the Toro, which they felt did a really good job, and unbelievably how much faster the 16-foot cuts compared to the 11-foot, which pretty much blew us away, and that's our objective, is to get more area covered in less time. Unfortunately, they weren't able to demo the Jacobson, because the dealer didn't have one to demo, and told us he won't have one to demo, that unless you buy one, he's not going to have one. So that was kind of a bad deal, but there's been some conflicts with, with purchasing of parts in the parts department, so we're probably not too upset about it. The Toro manufacturer's been very reliable, the piece of equipment's been superb as far as very little maintenance, if there is maintenance, getting parts has never been a problem, getting a replacement to, if something is down for a long period of time, getting a replacement from Toro's never been a problem. So we really are looking at Toro as being the number one choice as far as the staff in the parts department. Typically, or in the past, this big mower's been on an eight-year rotation. With the 16-foot, we're pretty confident that we'll go to push that up to a 12-year rotation on the capital improvement plan, so we see that as a benefit. All these prices are off the state contract, which is fairly similar to what the fire truck example is given. Asking to purchase this more earlier than we typically would do in this process, and the only reason being is the state contract is up on January 31st, 2019, they're telling us to expect a 5% increase after January 31st, so that's why we're bringing it forward at this time. We typically wait a few more months before we even bring it forward, but that's why we're looking to do this. We did just look at the two manufacturers, past history, there's one other supplier that we have utilized with 11-foot mowers two different times, and whole times ended up getting rid of it within three or four years because of, just couldn't handle the wear and tear. So that's why we are only looking at the two manufacturers of mowers at this point. So this staff recommendation...
So it is staff's recommendation that we purchased the Toro for $98,234.88 from MTI, with the expected delivery being the end of March. Even though we realize it's $5,754 more than the Jacobson, again, because of the history that the golf course has had with getting parts, availability of parts on the Jacobson they have, and we've had no trouble with Toro. We feel it's worth spending the extra money, especially since we've been keeping the mower for 12 years. It's all worth the value.
What was the budget amount?
Budget amount, I didn't write it down because this is going to be about the equipment certificates. I believe we had...
It's under the number that was...
It is under the budget amount.
Okay.
Yes, I'm sorry, I didn't write that down.
So you pretty much had the motion when you said it right here at first, so can I just move what you said?
Well, that's it, check with, Bruce, you got a question?
I just, is 2011 Toro depreciated now, or is there a charge that's going to happen?
No, we don't...
You don't depreciate?
We don't depreciate. We do it from an accounting standpoint, but we don't fund the depreciation in that.
So is it on our books as a value greater than $9,500?
No.
So we won't take the revenue? Great job.
You, you won't take a gain?
Or a loss?
Right.
Because it's depreciated now? Okay. And then just, because I'm not familiar with the process, are there other dealers that you could get a bid from, or is it just this one Toro dealer that you would...
State contract is, the dealers that are on state contract are the only ones that you can go to to get this pricing. There's probably, and there wouldn't be another Toro dealer within this, our area that you could go to or that would sell to us, but even if there was, they couldn't sell it for this price because they're not a part of state contract.
Thank you.
I have a quick question, what was the total on the certificates, the dollar amount? Just a rough guess?
I think between the SCBA's, the lawnmower, and the front end mower that's still yet to come, I want to say it was upwards of like $350,000.
Okay, so if those certificates, we get those in advance, or...
What we do is bond for that later this spring. First debt service payments don't show up until 2020.
But we're not, we don't actually have to take the full $300,000. I mean, if this comes in, $5,000, it's going to be the exact amount.
We will design it around what the specific amounts are for each one of them.
Okay, well, because we had it in the budget as the full.
Those were our budget estimates, you took those out from a fund...
I was just kind of curious how that was going to play into the budget then.
Yeah, good question. Okay, any other questions? And I guess, ready for you of a motion?
Yeah.
Move as per Glenn's elegant way of recommendation?
No.
Okay. Give for a second?
Second.
We got a second by Sean Ryan. There's no other comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes five zero. Thank you, thank you. Ken? One more time?
One more time, the E-schedule amendment in a row here. So we have this time, this is an item that myself and Chad Lundgren, building officials, have been working on, and we're having a hard time just with the holidays and everything, getting responses from other cities on how they were addressing this matter, but as the council's aware, and if you weren't aware, we've utilized since 2009 software that can help us administer our building code inspection program, basically keeping track of what inspections have been done on properties with permitting issues. Also tracks our planning reviews, all our conditions permits, variances in plants, and finally our nuisance items, long grass, snow removal, and those types of things. So we're 10 years into that process, but with our current software, which is the EnterGov software, we are anticipating an upgrade right here in 2019. Basically have to have a server upgrade completed on the city's equipment before we can do that upgrade, but that will get a new online permit interface that we've had for the past few years, that's, it's functional, but it's not great. The updated one is much better, and the other thing that happened over the past year is we have iPads, and there was an upgrade to the iPad software that made those inoperable in the field. That was an iPad thing, not an EnterGov thing at this point, but we can't get those tablets working again until we get the upgrade done. And so this upgrade of the software in 2019 here is a big deal for the building and planning departments, but I give that as background information for kind of the technology and how we operate day to day. We had budgeted $3,500 in 2019 for what we termed software enhancements, and basically that's tweaking things to make the software work better, more effectively in the field, and then make it easier to use for residents that apply for permits. So we've got a little better handle on how that has been functioning and where that's working in order to bring these E-schedule amendment items here tonight for you to consider. And basically, we've thought about this a couple of different ways, just having a specific land fee on building permits that we could call a technology fee, or basically just putting it into the cost of the permit overall, which is what most cities in the area do. We talked to Prior Lake, Shakopee, and others in the county, and how they had been addressing this over the past years, as they have also added software to administer these codes and inspections. What we came up with was a very nominal increase that will help cover what we've obviously budgeted for this year, but also help, help us keep up with upgrades and enhancements in the future, is a 0.05% increase fee proposed to all new structure permits. So we have, if you look at our E-schedule that I've attached here, we have some permits that are based on the permit fees on their construction value, labor, and materials to do that work. And we're proposing a 0.05% to all of those permit fees. The example I give in the fees here is that a $250,000 value new home, that would add about $125 to that total permit cost. And then for all other permits that we have, which are basically flat fee permits, roofing, siding, decks, and basement finishes and the like, suggesting like just a $5 flat permit fee increase to those permits as well. All told, that generates about $1,600 in additional revenue based on our 2018 numbers. So not significant, but again, helps offset those technology enhancements to ultimately make the system function better and function into the future. This is a thing that most cities have been looking at recently, and again, this is, we're hoping to have this ready for you earlier, but just waiting for feedback from some of the other cities in the area, and how they were addressing it, and also just putting it into their fee structure, which is similar to what we are proposing here to cover those. So on the E-schedule as attached, the only changes are what's proposed in yellow, so again, you're just seeing a $5 increase for all the flat fee permits, and then the 0.05% add value multiplier on the value-based permit fees. So that is what our proposal is moving forward, and this will also, I added it in the report, but as we move into our rental registration program, adding a module for that in our software, or I should say tailoring a module more specifically in our software for that would be covered at least partially by some of these fees as well as we move forward, and/or have a minor fee incorporated in the rental permit side of things as well. But we'll talk about that more as we get into February and March, when we bring that back to the council for actual discussion on the ordinance and to that topic.
Ken, any questions for Ken?
I always have a question. Can the major upgrade to EnterGov software, it says you're hopeful for, are you hopeful that they're going to come out with one, or are you hopeful that you're going to, they have one and you haven't done it yet?
So the software upgrade's been available since roughly mid-2018. We have older servers that need to be upgraded in order to accommodate that upgrade. So we've been a little bit of a holding pattern here until the city servers are upgraded.
So the onus has always been on us, not them?
Correct.
Okay.
They came up with the updates to the software, which forces us to make sure we have to upgrade our system to accommodate the software.
It's one of those deals, we bought the software about four years ago, and everything was fine, and then now we have to upgrade, but we need to upgrade anyways, it's time to do that.
Okay, any other questions?
What is the big piece, you know, Ken showing this whole technology front is that more and more of all of the building permit planning and that whole process is going more to the electronic form and submittals versus all of the old plan sheets and that that?
We're doing very little with paper nowadays. We actually recommend that everybody turn in their plans electronically, and most are more than happy to oblige with that because they don't have to print large prints, and then if everybody remembers, we purchased the plan interview table, which actually have in the break room if you want to take a look at any point, but that's how we do the plan interview. And then we also are scanning in our old paper plans into the digital system currently, so we'll be entirely paperless hopefully by the year.
I apologize if I missed this, but do you have a rental registration fee for...
No, because we do not have an ordinance, so right now we have a rental registration fee, sorry, we do have a rental registration fee that's just registering rental properties in town. What we're looking to move towards, and we've talked about this over the past year, is a rental inspection program where we actually are looking at life safety items in rental units, you know, carbon monoxide, fire exiting, that type of thing. We will be bringing that to you at some point here in the next month, month and a half, hopefully, in a workshop format, and we'll talk about what the fee for those unit costs would be. We've got what we believe that should be, but we'll talk about that in a workshop session when we get to that one, so that'll be another amendment when we get to that later in the year. We're not quite ready for that.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the amendment to the E-schedule?
No motion.
A second.
Okay. Motion by Rick Seiler, second by Maggie Bass. There's no other comments or questions? All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes five zero. Consent agenda. Anyone have any questions or issues on anything on the consent agenda?
I just have a couple of corrections, minor corrections in the city council meeting minutes of January 8th, and Barb, I'll just give those to you, just for clarification.
Okay. Anything else?
Mayor, I would comment, but just as a point of explanation to, I wonder why, why we're doing the cancellation of the temporary on sale on the item C, and then going back with what they have for item D, is there a requirement on those temporary one to four-day licenses, that you can't hold activities any closer than 30 days apart? So they moved it, amended it in the past, it's been in April, it moved it to March, we put it in conflict with another one, so that's why they had to make the decision to request cancellation of one license so that they can move it wherever it may be.
Yes, and I did see Ken's note that the St. Wences School fundraiser had top priorities, so. Okay, anything else on the consent agenda? Besides the minor changes to the minutes that Maggie's going to get to Barb? I guess I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Is that there?
Seconded by Rick Seiler. There's no other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes five zero. Miscellaneous. Mitch, we're starting with you, we're going left to right, you're good. Patrick?
Nothing.
Okay, Chris, you have anything else? Bruce?
Do not.
Lynn?
I've got nothing.
Ken?
Nope.
Michael?
No.
Barb?
No.
Maggie?
No, sir.
John?
No.
Bruce?
I just wanted to comment, Maggie Baker sending out the aquatic thing, and I'm wondering are we going to receive financial information regularly from the Aquatic Center?
Financial?
I should be asking you who.
I'm the chair of the joint powers board, so we receive review financials monthly, and we do ask Sandy Lynn to mail those to us, and that's probably something that I could follow up and confirm if we're getting that information, and I'm happy to share.
Great. Okay, anything else? Bruce, you have anything else? Okay, I know we kind of, Ken, you kind of touched the surface there on the IT, you know, where does that sit?
Well...
Well, obviously we need new servers.
Yeah, I think the point of where we're at now is trying to figure out if we need some assistance in reviewing proposals, I guess, is probably the best way I could put that.
Because there was a good article in the latest league magazine about IT consulting and...
Yep, so Mel Reader, who's the, I forget her exact title, but she's with the league, she's kind of their head technology person, we had met, Mike and I had met with her back right before Winter Hit, and we got a few names of some companies that we can contact for potential assistance if we wanted to go a whole-blown RFP route to look at proposals. I think probably, well, I don't want to say probably, I think that would be a big help to us to go that route, because none of us are IT experts by any means, but short of that, it's taking the information we've already paid for from CAT, our current consultant, and trying to do it on our own, so I think that's what, we just need to figure that out.
Okay.
If we think we can do something internally, I don't know, I, it's way over my head.
My gut feels, I don't think you should try to even waste your time during it internally. I think you're going to need outside help, because this is an issue that's not going to go away this year, it's going to be something forever, you know? If we don't do it right to start off with it, it's just going to be throwing money away. So let's keep moving on that.
Yep.
The other thing I had was census 2020. Now, Ken and I did meet with a gentleman from the federal government, what was that, late November?
Yep.
You know, and asked what our game plan was on the census, and we kind of held him off saying that, well, you know, we have a new council being seated. The gentleman did call me about a week ago, and one thing Ken and I both kind of got emails on is Scott County is...
They're a complete council committee.
Yeah, and so it may be behooves to actually maybe get involved in that rather than start our own committee, but Ken, we were going to try to, you were going to try to find out if they would let us encompass both sides of the parade.
I asked the question of their committee if they would consider New Prague as a whole for a complete council committee, not rather than just saying, "No, we're not going to do anything south of Main Street in your Lister County side." I have not heard back yet on that, and then the other question was, can you get a representative from the New Prague area, whether it be a council member or another appointed member on the complete council committee from New Prague? So I'll follow up with that, I have not heard back yet.
Yeah, Eric, because I knew we had a couple of questions there, but I'm sure that gentleman will be calling me back pretty soon, because they're kind of pushing to get some plan in place. That's all I have, if there's nothing else, I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Sean Ryan. If there's no other comments or questions, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposing? No. Sounds good, everyone, thank you very much.